Tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
I don't know why I did that. That's all right. Good evening. How are you? Good. Good evening. Welcome to the zoning board of adjustment meeting for Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. My name is Bob Pryor. I'm the chair. Introduce the members of the board this evening to my far-left Kevin Baum, to my immediate-left Vice Chair Laura Davies, to my immediate-right Clerk S. R. Olson Murphy, and to my far-right alternate John Dal Santo, who will be a voting member this evening. So all five of us are going to vote. Let's see. So the first piece of new business is the application of Amanda Kelly for a variance from Article 4, Section 4.2, and Article 5, Section 5.1.2A, for the expansion of a non-conforming use to permit the construction of an approximately 150-square-foot addition to the front of the existing residence on the property at 24 Prospect Street. The subject property is located in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel Number 65-163, and this is ZBA Case 25-. The applicant with us. Would you like to sit at the table in front of us, please?
And this is Alex, the builder.
Okay. You'll both sit down and introduce yourselves. Speak into the microphone. It's not for us, it's for our vast television audience.
Certainly.
Vast, vast television audience. You are?
I'm Amanda Kelly from 24 Prospect Street.
Alexander Malika with Redwood Builders at 70 Murrow Street.
Thank you. Please, let's hear what you have to say.
Sure. Well, thank you all for having us. So I've given you an application with a lot of pictures on it and a write-up of what we're trying to do. So this is my one and only home. Lived there for 10 years. I've been an Exter for 25. I have a 10-year-old daughter, and she's a pretty large part of why this is happening. She's disabled and will always be disabled. You may see us walking around town with a little girl in a walker past us. So she's 70 pounds right now, and one of the biggest things we need to do in our house is install an adult-sized changing table for changing diapers of larger-sized persons. So that would be not only wide and long, but it will be powered, height-adjustable. This is the same thing, the same type of thing that we actually put in town in our public spaces for people who are disabled who need to be changed. And when you have caregivers, not only the parents who are the caregivers, and I go to the YMCA and work out to be able to lift her her whole life, but we also have caregivers who come into our home to take care of her from various agencies, and they have a 50-pound weight limit, lift, or excuse me, lift limit. Obviously, as parents, we don't have any laws protecting us, but we have to be able to pick her up. So having the table be able to be height-adjustable is going to make a huge difference in that area. So with our very small, little, one-story ranch home, which is exactly what we wanted to buy with a child who we didn't want to carry up and down the stairs, on a very small lot, we, the main living space of our home is what you can see from the front. So there's the four windows across the front and the door there. That's the main living space. So in order for us to use the main living space when we change her, going forward with needing to put larger pieces in there, we need more space in that main living area. So the bathroom is right behind that main living area, and we carry her out into that space. Her bedroom is as big as her bed, plus three and a half feet on one side and 12 inches on the other side. So we use the main living space to do all of her daily care and dressing and all those needs. So we are asking for a variance to expand the front of our house out. You can see we have an existing porch, and the footprint of that, the far edge of that porch is exactly as far as we would go with the new construction. So the porch would get taken off, and the new wall would come to that edge where the porch is. So you can really easily...
When you say porch, you mean that sort of landing, that small, it's not the full width, it's just that little bit at the front with some steps off to the side?
Correct. It's just under five feet deep coming out of the house. And it's, I didn't bring measurements of this, but I think eight feet wide. So we have a chair out there, we have plants out there, so I think of it as porch. Sorry.
Well, I think, I think there may be, you're not talking about the existing porch, right, Bob? You're talking about the proposed stairs after the addition?
No, I'll get there. I was talking about that existing protrusion from the front of the house, which is not particularly large.
Right.
Okay.
So that would be a similar, just to give you like a visual, the slats of that is where the new wall will come out, and then we'd rather put the stairs straight out from there. Putting the stairs to the side, it's a lot of turning, again, carrying her, and so carrying her straight in would be easier. We have a wheelchair ramp on the back of the house, so she gets brought in straight down the driveway and up the back the majority of the time. If it's absolutely horrendous out, we carry her into the house. And, yeah. So when the, like for the bus and like all the normal stuff, she comes out and down the driveway from the back, because there was a much smaller grade in the back. We only had to do a very short ramp. To do a ramp here, we'd have to go all the way down, the whole length of the house, and then back some to get the grade for a ramp. So it would have just been kind of an eyesore, so we didn't want to do that. So that's our proposal, is to just bump out the front of the house a little over four feet, four-seven, and, yeah. So...
You're also adding a full-shed dormer?
Yes. So the roof line would stay, or the house would stay one story, and then we'd add a shed dormer. Most of the width of the house, the pictures that you have of the sketch I wrote on there, like, this was in the beginning of the design process. We haven't gotten very far with it. So we have gotten farther, and it looks more refined, and has nicer-looking, you know, window lights and things like that.
We're not, we're not as concerned about the aesthetics as we are volume and other things.
Yeah. So that would just be to add more light into that space, because that's the south side, so we figure we might as well take advantage of the light. And looking around my street, I have a one-story ranch, which kind of sticks out funny on the street of a lot of craftsman-style houses, so it'll just kind of look nice to meet the rest of the street. What else can I talk about?
I do have a question, if you don't mind. So if we look at this sketch, which shows the, the design sketch...
Yes.
I'm curious how that meshes with the one on the other side, which looks to me as though there isn't room for the three or four, three steps and the railing. In other words, once you expand the house, is there enough room for three steps and still be off the sidewalk and off the property line?
It would come down to the sidewalk.
Okay.
The three step, the two, it's actually going to be two steps now, would come down to just before, within a few inches of the sidewalk.
So the sidewalk is the property line?
It doesn't look like it on this diagram. It looks like the property line is...
I don't know who...
In a foot or so.
I did. I drew that.
Okay.
We don't have a survey of the property, but we do have the tax map, which shows, I believe the plot plan is accurate.
So my concern with that is that the, the distance between where the green ends, which I'm assuming is the correct lot line, and the sidewalk is public property and could be used by the town for public improvements at some point, and that would be a problem. So I...
I think you need to clarify exactly where your property line is.
I think that's, yeah.
Well, the other, yeah, the other potential issue, because I think we're talking about the plot plan view, if it is one point, or, you know, I'm sorry, not 1.6, or 1.1 foot six inches...
18 inches.
That, is that enough for the stairs? It seems like it would not be. And, and I think the other concern, not just with the impacts of the future, because I don't know, there's a huge risk of the sidewalks being...
Sidewalk, sidewalk plow.
They could. The other issue is you could end up with an encroachment, and that would be an issue when you do go to sell your house as well.
Well...
So...
So you want to make sure that the edge of the sidewalk may not be your property line, and I think you need to determine that.
So in lieu of an expensive survey, could we ask for fewer feet out?
Potentially, if that works. I mean, you do need a way to get from your front door to the sidewalk that's, you know, that meets code.
Right. So instead of bumping out four feet, seven inches, could we bump out whatever we determine is where the stairs would end on the property line that's drawn there? So three, 10, or...
Well, I...
Well, go ahead.
Go ahead, Laura.
I don't think we're trying to throw up impediments in your way at all. I think we want to help you. Maybe you could have this, the doorway inset into the building in that four-foot area or something. You know, you obviously need the space, and you don't have very many places to go, but I don't think it's a good idea to assume it's okay to encroach on public property. I mean, that's kind of...
That definitely wasn't the intention.
No, I'm sure it wasn't, and most people don't even realize that just because edge of pavement is there, that that's not necessarily the edge of the public right-of-way. Just happens to be my job, so I know that, but, yeah. But it's, it's something that, you know, I think you should think about possibly doing a slight tweak so that you can still get what you need to get done, but not cross that. And that's not even that. I mean, the tax maps aren't necessarily entirely accurate.
Right. That's right. You do need to, that's why we're saying you should verify it. I'm not sure, are there alternatives to a survey to verify it?
I mean, the town may have adequate records of their right-of-way that might be helpful to you.
Because it could be the sidewalk, but it could not be the sidewalk.
I would be concerned, you know, a winter plow, snow plow coming through there, the sidewalk plows, do they ever, do they come down Prospect Street? You don't think you want your steps right there?
Yeah. We currently have landscaping right there.
Yeah.
And it's never been an issue with the sidewalk plow, but it's a good point.
You also, you, you did note in your, in your description here that the, that it's not angled, in other words, the house is not strictly parallel...
Correct.
...to the street. There is a bit of a wedge there.
Yes.
Maybe offsetting the door at one end as opposed to Laura's idea of insetting the door, or not making it centered on the house, but at one corner or something like that. These are things that I think you should work out.
Yeah. And it may be worth, and I think, I do think, we, survey would be the best, but you don't need to get a survey, and I don't think we've, we always, we don't necessarily require it, but more research, because you might have more room than, than you think, or you might have less. It's worth doing that due diligence, and Building Department, Public Works should be able to assist with that.
Doug's been out a couple times to look at it.
Yeah.
And most of the time, people think of a survey, it's all for, or the entire perimeter of your property. You really only need to refine the front lot line for our purposes, so maybe that could be also savings for you.
It's too early for that, but I think that's something that we should discuss when we get to deliberations as well, whether or not to move forward on something like this.
Could we revise our ask by a foot, though?
I guess would need to know whether, you know, how, how deep are those stairs? I mean, I think, I think what we're trying to suggest is that, and I understand, given the season, you're anxious to keep moving, but I would hate to have you ask for less than, than you necessarily want, or...
I don't want to cut off a foot from the entire thing if it's not necessary.
Or have it be, right, I mean, we don't, the point is, we don't know whether the green is your actual property boundary or not. And so you might have more room than you think, you might have less room than you think, but if you do that due diligence, you would at least know that you're not ending up with an encroachment and bigger issues, especially when you go to sell your house and someone discovers it.
I have a comment.
Please.
So, understanding the tax maps may not be accurate down to, say, three inches or maybe even more than that. I do think that there is a general degree of accuracy to this plot plan, and it can be used as a reference. With that being said, I can tell you that the steps will be 24 inches, including both steps, and there is certainly a possibility to take one of those steps and actually bring them inside by dropping the platform seven inches for the height of a riser. And if we're looking at, that would put the steps at 12 inches. And if we're looking at a foot, I don't think we're even approaching what we believe to be the property line here, and certainly far from approaching the sidewalk. And this, this is in favor of trying to progress with the project. Like you said, due to the season, we would like to try to at least start to break ground here.
Yeah, right now, I do know, because we measured it multiple times, the distance from the edge of the existing porch to the sidewalk is 36 inches. So if you're talking about getting that down, not even changing the shape of the house or the addition, but just by putting an additional step, because we only have two steps outside, that's 24 inches, so by putting another step inside, we'd only be coming out 12.
Exactly. And we would certainly be...
That seems like a great...
So the existing application, then, would still be valid. What I want, what I'm trying to avoid here, and at least internally in my own head, is having you have to come back. So the idea is, you're essentially having a conversation with your builder that's, that says you can satisfy your need...
Yes.
...without touching what we think this, assuming this is correct, we could approve a plan so long as you don't touch the public area.
Yes.
As long as you stay within what this map shows, or this plan shows, as your property line. And you can go, you can go to the edge of it with a variance that we would give you, that's okay. So the step could be added, and as long as you don't think that you're going to have to encroach on this plan.
Right.
And it might be that you actually own to the sidewalk, we don't know, and it would be useful for you to find out, because that would in fact change, would remove some of the restriction that you, or some of the constraint that you feel right now. So it might be worth finding out.
Yeah, I can talk to Jay Perkins and ask him if he can shed some more light, because when we were looking at the map, the setback was shown from, it's not quite the center of the road, right?
Right.
Because the way we have a sidewalk on our side, so it's, right, he might be able to shed some more light on exactly how that works at our street.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant from members of the board? John, Esther?
Nope.
Kevin?
Just trying to understand a little bit better, does this back line back here represent your rear lot line on this? No, it goes back further?
No, it goes back further.
Okay. And then, is there a fence, like in the sketch?
Yes.
Okay. So the rear entrance with the ramp, where is that on this sketch roughly?
If you look at the green area in the back, the ramp starts right there at the corner of the, of the brown house and goes up to about the center, and that's where the door is.
So it's on the backside of the house?
Yes.
It parallels?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, along those same lines, I just wanted to, so I, we have the tax map and the plot plan, and it looks like, I mean, there was a prior addition based on the tax map, which is like, the tax map shows the building as an L.
Is it still an L? This is, you did this from Google Earth? It's, I can't, my house is very complicated, from the 1800s, and it's been added on to many times.
Yeah.
The interior is so confusing.
I wouldn't be surprised at all. I just, if you look at the...
I do think the L was, was what we filled in in 2019.
Okay.
So now it is a square like this, or almost a square.
Almost a square, but it is not, if you look at the tax map.
It is not that L shape, correct. That was updated.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure what I was looking at.
Yes.
Have you approached any surveyors?
I approached the surveyors when they were doing the, the plan down the street, when he had opened the little survey marker in front of my house, and I took a picture of where it was, and it looked like this to me, but I wasn't going to bring that up. Yeah. I was like, is that mine? And he was like, uh-huh. I was like, can I ask you a couple questions about it? He let me in. Yeah, it's easy to find.
Any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting me in.
So what's going to happen is that we're going to ask members of the public if they have any comments, since there is one person behind you. And you would have a chance to respond to anything she may say, positive or negative, and then we'll move into deliberations.
Thank you for being patient with me while I learn things. Appreciate it.
No problem. You can probably stay where you are. My sense is, I just saw this behind, so I...
I have nothing to ask, but thanks.
So I'm still officially opening it up to members of the public. If you'd like to say something, you may.
Thank you.
Okay. Moral support in the back row, is it?
Of course.
Thank you. All right, great. You're all set. You don't, no need to rebut. You're all set. We're going to move to deliberations now, so you can stay there and watch us do this, or you can, whatever, whatever makes you happy. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
For both being here. So, so what we have is, is I think fairly straightforward, with the exception of the possibility, as we've discussed at length, of encroaching into the public space. So I'd be interested to hear any comments from any members of the board who might like to comment on the, on the variance criteria, or...
Well, just a general comment that, and I think you kind of indicated that this is the way you were leaning, that we're, we're able to approve the expansion to a certain point, and that they can work out the details of how they manage their steps, as long as they don't...
Encroach.
Encroach. Okay. I think that if we can word it so that that is what's communicated, then I don't see any issues.
Because the relief that's being sought is not for a specific plan, it is for a maximum square footage of the expansion. And the way in which that is implemented, I think there's, there's a good bit of latitude on the part of the homeowner as far as steps inset or offset, or whatever it happens to be.
Yeah, I do think we want to address that it, you know, to the, the extent, I mean, it's a little interesting the way this was presented, and I assume that was what, you know, Doug's recommendation, but, I mean, we, it is additional expansion into both the front and side setbacks, so I do want to make sure that we tie it, if we approve, we tie it to that it's, you know, it doesn't go beyond what's, you know, what's been presented, and, and certainly that the, any stairs don't go beyond the property.
Property line. I'm sorry, I just want to question you on one thing, Kevin. You said this, side setback as well?
Well, because it's, it, the, it, the expansion goes, it's the way it, you know, works in New Hampshire, is the expansion, even though you're not going farther into the side, you're using more of the side setback by coming farther forward.
So like this little area is still...
Yeah. So it's technically an expansion of both.
Even though you're not going wider than the existing building?
And that's correct. And the reason I want to mention that is just because I wanted to be clear that we were aware of that.
Good.
And if we approve it, we're approving that as well, because it's not, not really directly addressed in the, in the application or notice, but I think there's sufficient information. Everyone who got this knew what was being proposed.
Right.
And the, the write-up mentions 150 square foot. We don't really care the square footage was, so much as the degree of relief from the setbacks, right? That's the part that matters.
Which we don't really have any data on.
Well, we're going to say that, you know, the proposed four feet...
Shall not extend further than...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think one of the two of you is crafting it, even as you speak.
Not easy.
Yeah, right.
I'm going to let Kevin do it if he's willing.
Yeah, and other than that, I think, I mean, I did look, I did look, just, you know, I walked through the neighborhood, and it, it is, you know, this would be probably the closest.
Yep.
But there is, I probably, I don't think there's a single conforming law or building on that street.
Oh, no, not in terms of setback.
Yeah.
Oh, goodness, no. No, this neighborhood is, as the applicant said, was built in the...
Exactly, exactly. And I do also, I mean, we did, the ordinance does allow for new structures to be no more than the adjacent structures. There's still more than that, but I do think it gives you some sense of the, of the scope of the request here.
Yeah, the building at 21 is pretty close. The building at 21 is pretty close as well.
Yes.
There's a couple that are close when I was walking down.
Yeah, yeah.
And 28 actually is, I mean, it's different because it's a corner lot, but 28 is also very close.
To Magnolia.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't look at, on the tax map, but when you walk by.
But even when you're walking the neighborhood, too, a lot of them do have the stairs up front that do come, really, and it's not a building, it's not the same mass, but everybody's kind of up on that sidewalk.
Yep, yep. All right, any further comments? Given the nature of the application, I do not believe it's necessary to go through the variance criteria, except it probably use, you know, I think a good idea to just touch on them briefly. You want to just take us through them, Laura, while Kevin crafts a motion?
I didn't bring my.
Kind of bring, put in the cart before the horse, I was verbally, but there we are.
Okay, let me just, okay, so, variance criteria. First is that the variance is not contrary to the public interest, and the second criteria is that the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Often these two are taken together, and the idea is that the proposed use must not conflict with the explicit or implicit purpose of the ordinance, and must not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, threaten public health, safety, or welfare, or otherwise injure public rights. So we believe that we've already covered the fact that it's similar to the other properties in the neighborhood, so it won't alter the character of the neighborhood, because other homes are also close to the sidewalk. I don't see any threat to public health or safety and, or welfare, but we want to make sure that you don't injure the public rights by encroaching onto the public property. So assuming that we can get that part of it straightened out, we will be okay with variance criterias one and two. Substantial justice is done, this one's kind of a big one, in my opinion, that the benefit to the applicant should not be outweighed by harm to the general public, and we feel it's a strong benefit to you, and, you know, there's no harm to the public, so. The values of surrounding properties are not diminished, there is no testimony about this, but this is a small change, it's not going to harm anybody's property values, and I think, you know, the idea that you have of enhancing the front of your property might even be a benefit to the neighborhood and property values. Literal enforcement of the ordinance is the fifth criteria. If it was literally enforced, it would result in unnecessary hardship, and it goes into an explanation of what hardship means, but in, in your case, we feel that, you know, we would not want to inflict unnecessary hardship on your family and your daughter by being literal about this criteria in the ordinance. Does that, do it?
Yeah.
I think we could go on, but we don't need to.
I'll accept a motion at this time.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion, and I am, you know, open to amendments to try to clean it up, but I will move to approve the application of Amanda Kelly for a variance from Article 4, Section 4.2, and Article 5, Section 5.1.2A, for the expansion of a nonconforming use within the front and side setbacks, to permit the construction of an approximately 150 square foot addition to the front of the existing residence on the property at 24 Prospect Street, with the proposed addition not to extend more than four feet, seven inches beyond the front facade of the existing structure, and that the stairs, that the front stairs may not extend beyond the property boundary as confirmed by the building inspector.
Second?
I second it.
Mr. Dal Santo, seconds, moved in second, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye, chair votes aye, you got it.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board.
Did I win longest motion ever with that one?
Sadly, I don't think so.
Not even close.
No, but it wasn't, it was.
It was a pretty good one.
It was a pretty good one, yeah.
No, no, no.
Well done.
I can't remember which ones we've had much.
I'll do better, I'll do better.
On the condition that you will, how about it?
Right.
12 conditions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're free to go.
I hope it works out great.
Can I ask a, just a next steps question?
Sure.
Do we, do we receive anything?
Yeah, you'll get a letter from me.
Oh, okay, a letter comes, and then Doug is aware.
A letter comes, but you're good.
And there's a 30 day, there is a 30-day appeals period.
Okay.
So you're aware that should be in the letter, but.
I talked to all my neighbors.
Butters do have the right to, yeah.
And you have to make substantial progress, the approval's good for three years, so you got three years to build it.
Okay, beautiful, thank you so much, everybody, appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Other business, we have approval of minutes of July 15 and August 19. So July 15 minutes was myself, Laura, Esther, Kevin, and John, so all five of us. I've got one minor, minor correction, line 35, Mr. Pryor asked if an alternate location such as behind the building would be unsuitable, I'm sure I said suitable. So just if they can get the un off of there, please, Joanna, I'm talking to you, even though you're not in the room. That's the only change I found, anybody else find anything on the minutes for July 15?
I didn't, I do wonder, though, if you should abstain on these, just because we're also voting on the request.
No, I can approve, I can approve the minutes, I can certainly vote to approve the minutes, because they are an accurate reflection of what was said, including that Mr. Pryor recused himself.
True, true, but, yeah, I guess that's fine, I mean, I don't think we'll.
I don't think we're touching anything.
No, no.
Line 35 either.
I mean, you were, you was from half of it, so.
Yep. Motion to approve the minutes, July 15?
I move to approve the minutes from July 15th, as amended.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Minutes of August 19, myself, Esther, Kevin, and John were all present that evening. So line 267, again, the world's most trivial change, it says there is no retail in the back, only residential, it qualifies as the mund, as, it should see, be, it qualifies for the mund as it was approved. So in line 367, as becomes for, and as you can tell, I read these fairly carefully this month, and that was the only change that I was able to find. Anyone else? Hearing none, motion to approve the minutes of August 19?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of August 19th, as amended.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, okay, thank you all very, very much, there's no additional business, I will at this point indicate that we are currently three members short of our full group of 10, with both Mr. Lemus and Ms. Page leaving Exeter, hopefully not driven out by their service on the zoning board, but other factors involved. If any of you have friends, or enemies, or know anyone, I've had several conversations with people who are considering it, but none of them have resulted in a, in a, in an application to the select board that I'm aware of, we would really like to have some more members.
Is there a requirement to be a resident of Exeter?
Yes.
Good.
That's it, motion to adjourn?
Move we adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.